Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at six oh two P M. And if I could hand it off to Councilor Kissmaker for being Indigenous Lawn Manager.
The council of the corporation, the township of Hornvein would like to begin by respect respectfully acknowledging that the land on which we gather here today is the treaty nine nineteen oh five nineteen oh six territory. The traditional lands of Indigenous peoples. As we work towards reconciliation, may we all live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all its diverse peoples.
Okay, great, thank you. So we do have one item of removal from the agenda that was presented, and that's coming back at a later date? Yes, okay. So if I can get a mover and a center for the approve the agenda as amended, moved by Councilor Belinda Kissmaker, seconded by Councilor Ted Shanneman, be it resolved that council will hereby approve the agenda as amended, those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, declaration of senior interest, declaration of public interest, council, you can do that anytime, and I have no documentation for tonight. And we're on to six point one, the strategic planning discussion. And hey. Go ahead, Ren. Okay, great. Please. One, just because it's on my screen, so I want to make sure it's showing up okay on the screen. That way we don't go through it and it isn't up.
So I can just let people know it before we begin sharing or after we begin sharing. I've just gone through the current twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven strategic plan. I've also gone through, but I've not provided here tonight, the service delivery review from which that generated the plan that we're using today. So I've just summarized what was in the the last strategic plan and where we are today with the items. So if it's highlighted in red, it's completed, and otherwise it's either ongoing with the old not started, started, or if it's in green on the bottom, it's a recommendation to be added. So and then, of course, these are just mine to get us started, and I would love to hear council's thoughts and ideas because it's your strategic plan. So to start us out, the adopt and follow the minimum maintenance standards, this was completed. Continue to enhance reporting to council, this is ongoing. We as staff feel this is important to continue to strive to do our best and to make things better always. So implement and maintain an employee succession plan for our staff and use C A O, so this has not been started. We're just transitioning with the new organization structure, and I think it would make more sense to do that once we've completed that. Implement and follow a planned schedule for regular bylaw and policy reviews, that's begun. Implement municipal community strategy, communication strategy, pardon me, we've not done that yet, we've had some communications training, but we've not developed a strategy at this time. And developing strategy for truth and reconciliation, that also has not started. And then the two additions there are implementing key indicators reporting, starting in twenty twenty-six. So probably on a monthly basis, along with my reports, I would report on some of our key indicators. So items like the number of kilometers of road paint, as I look at Swayner, and the number of lottery licenses that were applied for issued, or the dollar amount of grants that we applied for were successful in getting things like that. So I will certainly come up with a list and ask council to review it and see what additions or deletions they might want from that. And then the second item, I'm far from here, election preparedness with the election coming up, and you have a new clerk. It's probably good that we start early to get prepared for the next election as a staff. Ready for me to? Yep. I love, did you want to go through it or do you want to stop and talk about?
Yeah, why don't we do that? Okay, so I'll open up the floor for discussion from council on, first we'll discuss the items that were on our strategic plan, and then we can talk about the new items. And I'm not sure. Okay, how long did you have any comments on this one?
No, the key indicators reporting.
Okay.
That should help with what we are trying to get. What we had somewhat in place before, but it's part of the our various strategy.
Yeah, okay.
Election preparedness, well, it's coming up fast.
Yeah. Just one comment that I had was, didn't we not, for the communication strategy, did we not pass a resolution to hire Red Brick?
I don't remember if it was a resolution or if there was just discussion about it, I can check. Because when the acting C A O was here, there was some, there was some discussion about it, and I think Red Brick had a different idea than what we did, or we misunderstood that what was going to happen. So the training did happen, but nothing more.
Okay, I think when I'm going back to even further, I think it was May of last year. It would have been in May or June of last year. Or even April.
And that would include a policy as well?
Yeah, but that's my understanding, I'd have to go back into the motions and resolutions.
So then I would recommend doing it in twenty twenty-six and having a budget for it.
Okay. I guess we gotta make sure that it wasn't already paid for.
Yep, I will double check.
I don't think it was.
I believe it was not as well.
I don't believe that happened.
No, no, I don't think it, no, because it never came to council, I was just wondering where it was at.
That's not it?
Yeah.
Counselor Peter Chris, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Did he wait or is he close?
I'm not sure. No, we'll continue, and you can just come back for governance, yes, items. Do you have that?
Okay, so infrastructure and asset management. Complete a building condition assessment of all town buildings in to inform the short, medium, and long-term decision-making. So for all the current buildings that was completed, A B S I, it is nineteen Becker will have to be done. And also, I've got it as completed, but I'm sure there's an addition here, and it should be ongoing. And then adopt municipal vehicles and equipment maintenance and disposal policy, that happened in twenty twenty-four with file number twenty-nine-one. Adopt municipal buildings and property maintenance and disposal policy. I believe this has not been started, so we need to work on that one. Complete phase one of the arena project that's scheduled now for twenty twenty-six. Acquire environmental compliance improvement for storm and sanitary sewage, so although I've not seen it, I've been told that it's completed. Complete the Third Avenue rehabilitation project, so that we're into phase one now, and twenty-five, twenty-six is is the new date for completion. Undertake the coronation upgrade project, this has not been done, and it's slated for twenty-six, twenty-seven. We've spoken with Aqua in the last couple weeks regarding their capital plans and and the ability to address it next year with the other, the other big projects, we have to pick one, and this one's going to go to twenty-six, twenty-seven, so that we can finish the arena. Update and maintain our asset management plan, including buildings and cross-reference to tangible capital assets. So our plan is complete up to twenty twenty-four. I've asked to hold off on the twenty twenty-five for two reasons. One, I think it's important to have the ten-year capital plan done first, so that's part of what I'll be doing this year, along with the CFO. And the other part, Richard can speak to this in more detail if needed, but there was a problem historically with the amortization, it was off. The calculations were done incorrectly in the past, so those errors need to be corrected in order to have a proper asset management plan. So in order to have our T C A listing match up to the asset management plan, we've got to correct those calculations. And I believe if they're not already done, they're close to being finished.
Okay, that was gonna be my question, was if we were able to do the minimums?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Richard.
And the asphalt hot box, we moved to twenty twenty-six. Just to free up some of our budget this year and our cash flow. And obviously, the implementation plan for hot box rehabilitation would also then move to twenty-six, twenty-seven. And phase two of the arena, I left blank because I'm not sure what council's thoughts are there or funds. To me, it's part of the tenure fund, and I'm thinking twenty-seven might be quick. I think we might need a couple years to recoup some finances and make a plan. So if you'd like to discuss any of those, if you don't mind, I'm going to just.
No, go ahead, thank you. Okay, any discussion on those items from council? Go ahead, Counselor Kissmaker.
Can someone just tell me exactly where we are on the arena project? Like, you got phase one, you got phase two, phase two is the shovel ready, so. So I'm worried about the money.
Phase, phase one is the addition of the the gym and the library, and we've been meeting regularly with the engineers. Stacy's been doing a good job of looking after that project, and I think we're just doing a little bit of shuffling with some of the space that we're using and how we're using it. And then it's ready to go, we're trying to make some changes to reduce some costs. There were some higher-end finishing type items that were reducing to lower end, so instead of wood ceilings, just back down to a normal drop ceiling or something similar to that, that's less expensive. And then we're gonna look at the exterior too, and if we could possibly do a different exterior that also bring down the cost a little bit. And then I believe Richard can speak to the plan for the finances, but I, my understanding is it's pretty much in place.
Okay.
That correct, Richard?
Yeah, I believe so, I think we, we could be looking at some long-term debt there to, to, to get that done, because I'm not sure whether we can use the O C I F formula on that or not. Sorry, I didn't don't have that right off the top of my head.
Okay, I took a question on that, will we be getting a full report of where that project's at to council in the near future?
October?
Well, it doesn't have to be October, but depending, October works for us, like, we're already in one, but in the background.
Your schedule is?
Yeah.
Stacy, did you, are, would you be prepared to report on that project this time?
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
So are they October meeting? Perfect, thank you.
And was there any additions to the infrastructure and asset management that you wanted to add, or?
Nope, we've discussed them. So not, other than bringing it in-house. That does.
Okay.
Yeah, I can add it to the plan if you want, but for me, it's already done, like.
Um, I think it should be added to the plan, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's a big accomplishment.
Okay. Think it might be in the finance section.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly. Any other questions here?
Any other questions, Counselor Shanneman, do you have any questions at this time?
No, I think the arena is the big one, and that'll be ongoing, so we'll just see where we go with that one, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
I think I'm, oh no, I put it in that funny, but at the end. Can we jump to the last slide, just because I'm not sure, I almost feel like I might have wanted to put this in governance, but I put it in master planning. So if we jump to the last slide and then come back to finance, that would be I would appreciate that.
Okay, so we're gonna go to the master planning.
The very last slide, so the, so the bottom part of the last slide is the master planning, so developing a housing strategy, and I see that is being led by Hornvein Housing Corporation, especially when, when they have some great innovative ideas right now. The fire underwriters survey, that has not been started, but I did speak with the fire chief, and that's on his to-do list, along with the fire master plan. The water and wastewater master plan, I've not been able to put my hands on, and I'm not sure if it exists or not. If it doesn't, it's a costly plan, but we should maybe look at doing it if it's not already done in twenty-seven or possibly twenty-eight, just because it is a fairly expensive plan, so offer might have some options for us, or we can look for some funding to see if there is an availability there. But in the, in the last green section, I have updating the strategic plan, so I know we're kind of reviewing it right now and seeing where we're going. But is, is this a time that council would want to update the plan because there have been some significant changes? So I believe the vision, mission statements have changed. The core values, the core values have changed. So I don't know if you want to do a little refresher with just the clerk and me at this time, and then would you want to discuss that before we get really into the meat of everything? Or, or do you want to just work with this one until twenty twenty-seven?
I'm, I would like to see it refreshed.
Okay.
With our new branding and with the items that are in here, we don't have to dive deep. But like, just this is my take on it, because I thought that's what we were doing.
Okay.
But like, our, our front page with the new branding, like, I love this. Like, your first page of tonight, like, it looks so much nicer.
Yeah, unfortunately, the other pages are just a lot of data.
Yeah, no, that's okay, that's all right, that's, you know, it's measurable and you can use it, and then the only thing that I, when I was looking at what we called this one was planning to succeed, I flipped it and was like succeeding by planning because we've done so much, like, so much has been done. And then, but still only do it two-year, so council can do a deep dive.
One, okay.
And then, what other notes did I have? Oh, just updating the chief administrative officer, updating our mission and vision and core values. One of the things I noticed in here is our core values are laid out on multiple pages. I think we could put that down to two pages and, and photos with our community. Like, like the three bears, but sometimes they, I think we have photos of them with their hockey sticks.
We definitely do.
It like, yeah, I just think it should be a Hornvein document. They have, those were, yeah, those were the notes I have. And it's like, even third Ave, you could have one of the construction pictures, because it's is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, I, I, or I didn't know if you want to go more in-depth, or if you wanted to add projects, or if you had ideas, so I thought that maybe to keep that in the front of your mind as we're going through this, like, there's something that you've had that you're thinking, you know, we'd like to add this to the plan and get it started.
Thing is, is the election's next year, we're gonna be doing it all over again.
Yeah, you're gonna be doing it all over, so I would, yeah.
Okay, so I do have.
Your feelings, or?
Yeah, so I do have some additions, and then the recommendations, not additions. So then you can let me know the green sections if you'd like to keep them or, or just leave them for the twenty-seven update.
Okay, so updating the strategic plan, then are we gonna just do, we'll do it as a?
Let it refresh, that's what I've written down.
Twenty-five, then?
Yeah.
So refresh.
So twenty-six, twenty-seven, and we'll refresh twenty-six.
Right, yeah, but is that?
Yeah, I understand, I took those notes.
All good, everybody?
Good evening. Okay.
Okay.
So we did the infrastructure. We're at fine now, and we're at fine now.
We're on page twenty-seven of your document there.
Thank you.
Okay, so update, so update the ten-year long-range forecast, capital forecast, that's the tenure plan, and rather than go to a consultant, I'll do it, I've started doing it. I think I've got the layout pretty much done, and, and I'll, as I need input. If I need input, I think I will need input, I'll come to council, I want to make sure that you agree with my assumptions before I take it too far. So probably towards the end of October, I'm meeting for at the end of October, I'll come to you to get the some things sort of okay, before I finish it off. And then accelerate budget, budget submission and adoption timelines. For me, that's ongoing, we've already achieved that, but I think we need to continue achieving that and adopt best practices on procurement. I put twenty-five, twenty-six as a new timeline because there is a draft policy, but the new CFO should review that and confirm that it will work for them. Best practices based on reserve and reserve fund. So I have that myself down for that, I will work with the CFO, but I'd like to take the lead on that because I have a lot of experience with the reserves and reserve funds. Increase regular investments into asset rehabilitation. For me, that should already be happening, but when, but I know it's not, so this CFO, and that'll come in line with the reserve and reserve funds as well, so twenty-five, twenty-six for most of those things. And then my additions are surplus asset and policy, which I will write hopefully fairly quickly, and a multi-year budgeting and multi-year budgeting, so implementing multi-year budgeting and a policy that drives that process. So that would be myself with this CFO.
And how, how many years on the multi-year budgeting?
I've always done four, we could do five, the further out you go, the less accurate you become, obviously. So you have a tenure plan, for me, four years is good, and you're adopting the first year, and then you're refreshing every year after that and adding another year at the end. So if you have a long-term project, you can plan for that and refresh it as you go.
Okay. Any further questions from council on finance? Um, the only following question I have is are we going to be creating a new policy for how the finding material comes to council, or are we wanting to refresh? It's just we haven't had, like, we do the budgeting part, but then we don't get updates to where the budget's at.
So I talked to Richard about that, and I, I would like to see at the very minimum quarterly, and that was a requirement of the CFO position.
Okay, okay.
That was a job duty to have it at least quarterly, if not more often. I, I think management for sure needs to have it because they need to know where, where their budgets are.
Okay, so do we want to put that in, is that a policy, or is that a, what? Is that?
It's a job duty, it's part of the job duty.
Okay, so.
We can make it a policy if you want it to be, I don't think it.
Well, we have to definitely take, like, we do have a current policy, like, we'll have to rescind it or update it.
We'll update it.
Okay. You want to update them?
Yeah.
I think it's financial and controls policy?
Oh, that definitely needs to be updated. Yeah, that, that's definitely on the list of things to do. That's probably a more important question than, than what we want to do tonight, but there needs to be a lot of, yeah.
Okay. Any further comments or questions on finance? Okay, we'll carry on to.
Economic development, economic development, adopt a branding and marketing strategy, so that was completed in twenty twenty-five. Conduct a market gap study, that was completed in twenty twenty-four. Implement a staff proposed five-year economic growth plan, so there is a draft for that plan, so it's ongoing and needs to come to council for approval. Take steps to rehabilitate or remove derelict buildings, that's ongoing. We, we're have a, we try to get two a year down, and we got two down this year, so that was good. Pursue funding opportunities to make the E D O position permanent, so Stacy's looked into that funding, and I believe there is none available, is that correct, Stacy? Or, yeah. Okay, and then implement a business retention and attraction strategy that was completed in twenty twenty-four. And then revitalizing the Hallmark Center area. I have that, it's not started, but it's probably ongoing, because I think we've been trying to do that for years, that's probably ongoing is the better way to describe that one, it's very difficult to, it's such a huge building, nobody wants to take on the responsibility of a building that size, it has to be a multifaceted, huge project that would fit into there, and I'm sure there's a buyer that is you have to. We have to find it.
Thought we were waiting for it to get put in our name.
Yeah, that's where it was at the last.
Is that what we want, because I think, I believe the?
I think we had to get it put in our name before we could even do anything.
Demolition or selling or anything, yeah.
Yeah, so that was I know we had a delegation.
We're wondering why it was taking four hours.
That's right, because it was supposed to take a year, and now it's been two and a half years.
I think there's like an assumed ownership because we have to be responsible for it, there's some kind of a legal terminology for an assumed when, when we become responsible for health and safety reasons of the community.
Okay, I am not, I, I honestly, however it comes into our property, as long as it's legal, I'm good with it.
Okay.
Do something with it.
Yeah, we did have a delegation with Minister Rickford when he was the chair of the N O H F C. So there is a package there.
Okay.
And that was when we were told to get ownership of it. Up on that, up until that meeting, we were always told not to own it by I'm not exactly sure who, that was just.
Probably Vico.
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, it didn't make sense to do all we went boarded it up and all these things, so it doesn't make sense to me.
And we've sold portions of it off.
Yeah.
Didn't make sense to me either.
And I think it's under that same clause, that assumed liability that we were able to sell.
Yes.
And that implied, yeah. So I've got a couple notes to get ahold of the lawyer to find out where we are in that process and what we can do. Sell residential lots and encourage more new homes, so we're in the process of getting those ten lots back. Richard was, had started that process, and I've been pushing it, so hopefully fairly soon we'll hear something. And then market industrial lands for development opportunities, I don't think we've done anything there, I believe that, that section down Becker, and probably it needs to be cleared, lots need to be put in, a survey probably needs to be done, that's a big project, maybe a few years down the road when we can get it funded. But it wouldn't be a bad idea to get it into our official plan and get something done.
I think some of it's already in our official plan.
But are there lots?
No. Oh.
Probably just for zoning. Yeah. And then should I have an addition there? Oh, I haven't had a chance to talk to Stacy about it, but I thought it would be a great idea to develop a tourism strategy, and maybe we have one started. Yeah, because I've been on, it's fully completed, okay, and then maybe we could take it regionally. It, it's not gone regional though, right? No, okay.
Have we ever seen that council? You're asking? Destination marketing plan? Oh, destination marketing plan.
But is that a destination marketing plan, a little bit different from a tourism strike? They, they are related, yeah, okay.
And is it on our list?
And it was adopted, right? Hey, so if there's any questions in this section, otherwise, we're into technology.
Okay, so we are going to add the addition of develop a tourism strategy on it? And then we'll.
Up to council.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with it, and then we can bring back and see where we are at. Okay, I'm I'm fine with it and then we can bring back and see where we are at. Like I'm. I'm not even remembering meeting it.
Okay.
Remembered.
Okay, uh, technology news. Okay, sorry, I can't see that. So I guess I put my glasses on, maybe I can see. Promote the township, the website change usage and realize efficiencies. That's been completed. Develop a partnership with Ontario two-on-one for emergency and other supports. That was a little bit confusing. Because we appear to be on there. So I think it got started, but it probably needs to be continually updated. Does anybody, other than going online and trying to find us, you know, does anybody have any concrete information regarding that? No?
I think that came up with the previous C A O. Out, not them.
But. So we're definitely on the two-on-one site. And there is some contact information for the, it's just general contact information for the officer, it points to our website. For information, but we want, we we might want to look at getting it. Updated and and possibly like better informed.
Was that related at all to that radio tower?
It's no.
No, it was part of. It was part of the service delivery review. It was one of the recommendations in the service delivery review.
Okay.
To become part of the Ontario two-on-one system for emergencies and other support. So the next one is implement MFOA endorsed budget software. And that one was confusing to me because I don't believe that there is an MFOA endorsed budget software. I don't believe that MFOA would endorse any one company's budget software over another. So I I think whenever this was written. There was some confusion there and I my recommendation is to remove it.
Okay, we do have budget software.
We don't have budget software. We don't need budget software. And we do have budgeting capable, um, there's a budgeting module within iCity, but it definitely doesn't do a budget for you. It just. Presents your budget. But once we complete the budget, Excel for this side of a municipality is really all easy.
Okay, then we have it.
We have Excel, yeah. I would not recommend for a municipality to decide to spend the money on budgeting software.
Okay.
And then implement fire management software. I spoke with the fire chief and the plan is to do that in twenty twenty six. Um, I think he's going to speak to some of the other municipalities because there's some very catalog expensive type softwares and there's others that are quite more reason, quite a bit more reasonable.
Okay, any questions from council or names items and technology?
You have two items that you.
Oh, so and I can't read them that far.
Oh, yeah. So we've already started those. I've already started those. So our whole system is very old and it's rather expensive. So I believe I can. Get a voiceover internet protocol system for half the price. So for a fifty percent savings in cost. And then they sell internet. I think I spoke to council before. We're paying a thousand dollars a month. For one gigabyte of internet speed, which we do not have even one hundred bytes of of internet speed. Like we don't even have. A tenth of that, so.
Okay.
So we're going to look at what we can do. I have somebody speaking with Bill to see if they can argue them down.
Okay.
For us.
Yes.
Yeah. And that's that's it for me. If we did this, we've done the master planning already.
Okay, so just a question back on the master planning. When we develop a housing strategy, Horned Pain Housing, so are we. Going to give that to them or like?
I I think.
How do we integrate this plan with their?
So I think develop a housing strategy. Catherine Lewis with Horned Pain Housing Corporation is working on her strategic plan. And it's her mandate, housing is her mandate. So I think we muddy the waters if we get involved, I think. So the only. Develop a housing strategy, our our point of. It should be to hand that off to Catherine and have her bring bring back to council what she needs to bring back, like. Report back to us on what's happening. That's it. I don't think we say the gaze or names. That's why she has a board. They make the recommendation. We are the shareholder. It comes back, right?
Right, right. So there was that, that do we want to change that out of housing and that we adopt the shareholders' direction that she had talked about at the E G M? Because that is councils. That's what they have to adopt, like we have to adopt, right?
Yeah.
So do we want to change that?
Develop.
Adopt the shareholders' direction and.
Review and adopt.
Review and adopt, yeah. I can't remember what else we. Presented at the E G M because there was two things coming back that I mean. Let's leave that out.
You can just add it and leave develop a housing strategy. I can add through the H H C.
I'm okay to take it right off, like it's up to our purview, right?
No, okay. Yeah, that's that's what I said. It's like it's been really a long time. So. The, um, in the responsibilities, I I. Added clerk because we now have a clerk, I added CFO and. As we now have that, I added ongoing because we didn't have that before, so. Just little minor changes.
Okay, I'm I'm good to put those pages right in like what we have there. Take over your highlighted green and get rid of what it says. Like, I'm good with that. I'm not, as long as we have something that we can go back to.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be, like, and we have such nice marketing materials now that.
And we haven't, we've, core values have been updated and. It's been, I believe, things that were published, am I correct?
Yeah, we added the.
Tourism or adventure. Yeah.
I think we added two.
Believe so. There was, Stacy, do you remember there was adventure and one other? But they were related on us.
Anyway, we can update them if you did and.
Yeah, okay. So is there anything?
It's gonna be a busy year.
Anything that.
Two months.
Yes. Yeah, it is.
You might.
First of. Okay, any further questions? So are we going to expect the clean document back or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, of course, because you need to agree with what we've changed and especially if we're changing. The core values and and I think that needs to come back for adoption.
I would imagine it would need to come back for adoption, but I imagine we would bring a draft first and then.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll update that too.
Sounds good.
We're good?
Yeah, thank you.
Have our motions for the vote?
Nope, I don't need to. We need to bring it back.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to six point two, kids sport horn pain, request for support to autism awareness celebration and we deferred this. Brought it back. Does Richard want to speak to it?
I think the. Uh, the report is pretty straightforward that I provided to council. So just. Ask if there's any questions. There there is some surplus there in spending mainly because of the the mayor's. Uh, travel costs this year, a lot of it being picked up by Roma and. So there is room. Yeah, good roads. I'm sorry. Yes.
Roma is going to be like they're paying my bill.
Any any questions? The recommendations and options are there. So I guess it's up to council to decide what they want to do based on the information that was requested at our last meeting.
I I just want to reiterate that I understand this correctly. The recommendation is to move some of the money that's left over. There's a surplus of five thousand dollars that the mayor has not used for travel. So it's to use some of that money for this donation, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
We move move the budget dollars, I guess, if that's that would be the way to, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Jen.
I also want to clarify, because I did speak with Richard about this. I know council does donate one thousand dollars to Santa Claus Christmas party annually. Uh, and I confirmed after he wrote his report that that is still doable in addition to this. Because I imagine council will probably want to do that, so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, any questions from council? Okay, there being none. I do have a couple of slides of one, we read one part of it because. Okay, so I'm I'm okay with the donation part, but in the other recommendations, it talks about us reviewing the municipal grants policy?
Yes, and I think it was just for everybody, staff and and council to get updated on what the written policy is, because I don't think we're really following it. If the, if you look at it, everybody that is asking the council for money should be providing some. Financial information and information about volunteers and a lot of other things. The other thing that I was recommending is that maybe the policy be amended to include. A fall request, set a deadline each year for anybody that might be looking for funds to support their activities. So right now, what we should be doing is asking anybody looking for money in twenty twenty six to get their requests in before, I'm going to say. I don't know, November first or November fifteenth, so that it can be considered when we're, when council is looking at the budget for twenty twenty six. And it can be put in the budget at that point in time.
Okay, go ahead, Melo.
So just going back to then the strap fund, maybe we could add, review and update the municipal donations policy to the strap fund. And I had written a note and I'm sorry I'm taking us back to that, but I think we should add something about the hundredth anniversary because that's coming very quickly.
I agree with.
Yeah, so that it doesn't fall off them.
Yeah, twenty twenty eight.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Our council, we agree with that. We do need to review our donations policy. Adding that to the strap plan and then also adding the hundredth anniversary preparation somewhere within there. Okay. Um, yeah, I agree that we need to look at it. I totally agree with that. We have a deadline for when requests come in. My question is, how much of a percentage do municipalities give away? Because that to me is like you're, you collect taxes to pay the bills and I don't want to not. Support people, but at some point like. Is there any?
From my.
No, there, like I just. Yeah.
From my, from my experience over the last ten years, I think I've worked in ten different municipalities and each one is different. There are some municipalities that take the the stance that it's taxpayers' money. And we shouldn't be donating taxpayers' money. We should go to the taxpayer and ask them if they want to support your your program. Um, and then there's others that have an annual budget and sometimes it's in the thousands of dollars even for a small municipality. So. I've seen it from one extreme to the other, you know, from a- almost zero to thousands of dollars. So there isn't a set policy, but I guess that maybe all comes back to what kind of flack. The council or or staff would get from the public when they hear that money is being donated. If there has not been any, any, any flack. I would have to say, in my opinion, Horned Pain's donation level is very small. But Horned Pain is also a very small municipality with very large tax rates. So maybe that's where you want to be.
Yeah, go ahead, Brenda.
The other thing, though, is we don't really have the time, the business. Uh, involvement within the community because we don't have very many businesses, like first have a lot of businesses that support their community. We don't have that. So.
Good point.
Kind of have to help ourselves.
Yeah, I'm I'm not saying that we don't have any donation policy. I was just wondering if there's any.
Yeah.
Um, parameters, like what other people follow and historically, I guess we could look back. From ourselves over the last five years, each year, how much we donated and go with that.
The other thing I can do is look at some of the pyramid municipalities around us that are close to our size and see what they're giving as well as a comparator, as well as our historical giving.
Okay.
And maybe we can like base our decision on that in the new policy.
Right, right, because at some point there is going to be a cutoff, like we have to.
Yeah.
We can't say yes to anything. Go ahead, Jen.
So do we want to bring a discussion on this policy back to the October meeting?
No.
Or?
Yeah, I'm just wondering how much, yeah, how much time do we have?
I'm just thinking because the budget, first budget meeting is in the end of October.
So I'd be thinking more the end of October because it's already the twenty fourth, so there's not that much time to do this.
Your end of October?
I would think more the end of October.
Budget meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, not not the eighth, not the October eighth meeting.
Okay. Council? We'll look at it at our first budget meeting? And then, yeah. Okay, any further comments on the report? Okay, there is a motion provided. If I can get a mover in a second here, please. Move by Council of Petrus, second by Council of the Andy Kusner. Whereas Kidsport, sorry, whereas Kidsport Horned Pain is organizing an autism awareness celebration on October fourth, twenty twenty five. Featuring activities such as sensory games and autism information booths. And whereas Kidsport has requested a five hundred dollar donation for this event and the use of table and chairs from the township Horned Pain. Therefore, be it resolved that council authorizes the use of tables and chairs and agrees to donate five hundred dollars to Autism Awareness Celebration hosted by Kidsport. Be it further resolved that the donation will be expense from from the donations to organizations expense account? Okay, but we're transferring the funds, right? We're taking the fund. Okay, sounds good. Any further comment on that motion? And I'll put that to a vote. Those in favor. And that is carried, not opposed. Okay, moving on to bylaw. We have the new multi-res property tax subclass. Did you want to speak to this, Melo?
Um, there's a couple, there's the new multi-res property tax subclass, there's the new affordable rental housing property tax plus. Our unique factor and subclass, the tax ratios and the tax rate. So I I believe, so this is to. Probably Richard can speak to it as much as me, but it's to get the new. Both the affordable rental housing class and subclass and the multi-res class and subclass. Into our bylaws so that next year we can actually implement them. They're getting added to the tax rates this year at zero percent. So there's no implication to the taxes. But it puts it into our books so that next year, should the council want to do it, they can. There is a provincial obligation to have this completed by September thirty, so that will meet this obligation. We don't have to actually implement a tax that that creates a revenue. We just have to have it. Within our bylaws and reported to M P A C so that next year, if we want to have a a rate that actually is going to generate some revenues, we can.
Okay, so just so just understanding that from, for zero percent. So currently, if there's a multi-res, this is for new multi-residential property, right? So it's a new build, so.
Yes, okay, so every year we set our our tax rate. So if we actually put a tax rate of anything other than zero percent, it would have changed everybody's taxes. Our taxes are done for twenty. Our taxes are done for twenty twenty five, the, the rules been out, the taxes have gone out, but we can't change the bottom line. But we need to make sure that it's in place for next year. So the way to do that without having any financial impact to the year, to the current year, is to put it at the zero percent.
Okay, okay, so then my next question goes to the next one, the new affordable rental housing, so that's all.
Exactly the same.
New.
Yeah.
Okay, good, okay, I just don't want someone coming and saying, now we have zero percent, I'm not. Okay, in the future, okay. Right, right, just a second, Jen, go ahead, Richard.
Sorry, if I, if I may, just to clarify, we're putting in, we're creating the subclasses, but we're making the rate, the very same rate as residential, which is the minimum for any of the properties in, in the township. So we're just creating the subclass, but setting this, the rate the same. Council in the future can decide if they want to try and encourage new multi-res or new affordable housing units by giving those classes a reduction of up to thirty or thirty-five percent of, from the, the normal residential rate. Okay, so it, it, they're really there to try and encourage development by giving a, a, a tax rate reduction in those two new classes. But, yeah, you're understanding, Manuela?
Yep.
Okay, good.
I was gonna say something, so Laura just wanted to clarify that the zero percent wasn't that they'd be paying zero percent taxes, but that there'd be a zero percent reduction as of yet, so they're changed to their taxes.
Okay, any further comments on our questions for the first bylaw, twenty one sixty twenty five? Okay, if I can get a mover and a second here, please, moved by Council Peter Kissmaker, second by Council Belinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty one sixty dash twenty five being a bylaw to adopt a new multi-residential property tax subclass. Be hereby read a first and second time and considered read a third time and finally passed. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, bylaw number twenty one sixty one twenty five, if I can get a mover and a second here, please. Moved by Council Belinda Kissmaker, second by Council Ted Schenman. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty one sixty one dash twenty five being a bylaw to adopt an affordable rental housing property tax subclass. Be hereby read a first and second time and considered read a third time and finally passed. Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I believe that these should read property tax class and subclass. The class, that's the class, the subclass is the deduction. I believe it's class and subclass.
Okay, in my opinion, the class is residential, the subclass is rental property, rental housing property tax subclass, affordable rental. I think it's a subclass of, of residential, you'll see that when you get to the tax rate bylaws.
No, I believe it's new multi-residential property tax and subclass, if you read all the literature, it's how it's written. Even OPTA has, even the OPTA literature was property class and, and subclass. Because it's the new affordable rental housing, it's on new affordable rental housing. It's the class, because it's the new housing getting built, it's not on the old rental housing, it's on new rental housing being built, it's the class. And the subclass is the.
Uh, Manuela, I, I have compared it to, we currently have commercial tax rates. We, and we have new, um, new construction and then occupied, which are subclasses under commercial. If you, if you could jump forward to the, the tax bylaw, the, the tax rate bylaw, not ratio, but rate. You'll see that it is set up as subclasses to residential and the new multi-res is a subclass to multi-res. But maybe I've got that wrong.
Can I interject here? I think the clerk has the ability to change wording. We, we are in, all of council is in favor of adopting this. We understand that the wording may be off, if it needs to be changed, that is something that's in the purview of the clerk to do.
Perfect.
So I'm, I'm in favor as long as council understands that it's a wording issue. Uh, but, um, the essence of what we're casting stays the same. Sound good? Yeah, yeah, we can do that, because I know what needs to be done before the thirtieth.
Yeah.
We want to make sure it's done correctly and that the wording is correctly, we don't want to be. But, um, and I'm, I'm correcting.
Yeah, I was actually also going to suggest that when there was like a, a moment.
So if I can get a, I did get a mover and a second here, it was Belinda and Council Schenman. And Council Schenman. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty one sixty one dash twenty five being a bylaw to adopt an affordable rental housing property tax subclass. Be hereby read a first and a second time and considered read a third time and finally passed. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, moving on to the twenty twenty five tax ratios. If I can get a mover and a second here, please, moved by Council Peter Kissmaker, second by Council Belinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty one sixty two dash twenty five being a bylaw to establish the tax ratios for the corporation, the township of Horn Pain for the year twenty twenty five. Be hereby read a first and second time and considered read a third time and finally passed. And just from the discussion that we had, that, um, some of the new subclasses came in at just the same rate, it doesn't touch anything, and then the multi-res is at zero. Yes, okay. Any further comments or questions on that? And I'll put that bylaw to a vote, those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, bylaw number twenty twenty five tax rates, moved by. Council Peter Kissmaker, second by Council Ted Schenman, be it resolved that bylaw number twenty one sixty three dash twenty five being a bylaw to establish a point in time cutoff for all property classes and to fix the rates of taxation for all property classes for the year twenty twenty five. Be hereby read a first and second time and considered read a third time and finally passed. Any further discussion on that bylaw? Not seeing any, I put that to vote, those in favor? And that is carried. Okay. So we're good to go for twenty twenty six budgeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we're moving on now into closed session. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, if I can get a mover and a second here to move into closed session, moved by second by Council Belinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved that the next portion of the meeting at seven P M be closed to the public in order to discuss personal matters of an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees pursuant to section two thirty nine two B of the Municipal Act two thousand and one. Those in favor? And that is carried.
Okay, so we do have an item, uh two items rising from the closed session. The first one is a motion and the second item is ongoing. So the if I can get a mover and a seconder for the motion council moved by councilor Peter Kissinger second by councilor Ted Shentiman. Where is the job posting for the position of the chief financial officer CFO closed on August twenty ninth with six applications received? And whereas a selection panel consisting of Michael Wildman, president of municipal government wave liners, Manuela Batnavana, C A O deputy clerk and Richard Bennett acting treasurer had been assembled to interview and hire an acceptable candidate. And whereas Manuel Batnavana, I'm sorry if that's okay.
Batovania.
Batovania, I want to put a no in there for some reason. Okay. Whereas Manuel Batovania requested to be excused from the entire process since she was familiar with one of the applicants, therefore requiring counsel to make the final hiring decision. And whereas the remaining two members of the selection panel completed the review of all applications and the interview process and provided a recommendation to counsel. Therefore, be it resolved that the council of the corporation on the championship of Horn Pain does hereby approve the recommendation of the selection panel and authorize staff to submit an offer of employment on the terms and conditions outlined in the closed session. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, then that's the end of our meeting. So if I can get a mover and a seconder for the adjournment. Moved by councilor Peter Kiss to make her second by councilor Belinda Kiss to maker. Be it resolved that by law number twenty one sixty four twenty five being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at their special meeting held on Wednesday, September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Be hereby read a first time and a second time and be considered read a third time and finally passed. Those in favor? And that is carried. And the adjournment moved by councilor Ted Shentiman second by councilor Belinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby adjourn this special meeting of council held on Wednesday, September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. At eight thirty seven P M. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay.